Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to morning, this morning, to City Council Study Session, Ms. City Council for Thursday, October 31st. Happy Halloween to everybody. I don't see any costumes. What's going on here?
That's good.
Okay. It's a scary thought to think that they would show up, this staff would show up in costumes. I'm gonna ship you running here anyway, Mr. Brady, I'll tell ya. First item on the agenda is to review the agenda for next Monday evening's regular City Council meeting. Page two. Items two through three C. We're not gonna make a comment on that. Items three D through four B. See every once in a while I show some restraint.
I know.
Items four C through four E. Items four F and four G. Items four H and four I. Items four J and four K. Items four L and four M. Yeah, Councilmember Richens.
On four M, we looked at the program that those were acquired under, and we'll be reviewing a few potential changes, probably, in community cultural affairs to bring to the council. There's a, as is with all federal grants, lots of strings attached to the acquisition of these, and so these are gonna need to go forward, as is, for now, but I think at community cultural affairs, we'll be getting some potential revisions, because the money under this program is almost spent out, and the strings will be changing in some way that is still undefined. So, as we go forward, we'll be able to evaluate the money that's left and be able to come to a consensus on the council, or some kind of direction on how to deploy those resources in the future, so.
Okay.
All right.
That applies to four N also, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything on four O? Items five A through six C. Six D. Mr. Wesley.
I have, not yet, nor has Councilmember Summer met with the applicant on this. We have some issues, questions, I should say. We met with them over a year ago, and did not have a follow-up, and so I would like to pull this until we have a chance to meet with them. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. Councilmember Summers concurs, and when we get that, then we'll address it, because I can't support it as is, and I'm sure we'll work things out with the applicant. Okay? Anything else? Next item is, here, a presentation discuss provide direction on the regional solid waste solution.
Mike Comstock, Director of Solid Waste, here to talk about the regional solutions for solid waste disposable disposal. Joining me today, from Solid Waste, is Tara Acuna, Ray Ferlich, Tim Wilcox, and Sherry Bradley, and Aaron Romaine, who are all part of the team that helped put together Mesa's position on this effort.
Anybody left in the office?
I don't think so.
You had to look?
I don't think so.
You had to turn around and look to see. Whoa, okay.
He got me off script, so I had to look.
And, Aaron, thank you for writing the script for him, by the way. Appreciate that.
How do you know?
There was a reason that she went over there, okay?
Well, regrouping. In addition with us today is Scott Pasternak from SAIC Energy, Environment, and Infrastructure, who was the hired consultant who helped the three cities put this program together. And finally, from Gilbert is John Minkellis, who is the interim Associate Administrator of Solid Waste, who's here to observe the discussion today. Finally, let me introduce Patrick Murphy, who was designated as the team lead and coordinator for this project. He did an extraordinary job in putting three cities together over the course of the last year to bring to you what we think is a good solution for regional solid waste disposal. I'll turn it over to Patrick at this point.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. The last time we met, the City Council agreed to move forward with this regional effort that included working with the city of Tempe and the town of Gilbert. As Mike mentioned, we hired SAIC to assist us with the development of the RFP, as well as the review of the responses. The purpose of the project was to increase the market leverage through a multi-agency RFP that resulted in substantial cost savings on disposal, and increased revenues on recyclables, including getting the same rates for all three municipalities. Currently, the city Mesa incurs-
Patrick, real quick, Patrick. I thought there was another, more cities involved. Was Scottsdale originally initially?
Originally, yes. Councilmember Richens, the city of Scottsdale was involved, but they exercised their right to terminate that involvement a few months ago.
And maybe you'll tell us why, at some point in the presentation, why they might have pulled out?
I can, yes. Councilmember Richens, basically, the city of Scottsdale felt that it was in their best interest to go out on their own. They just felt that they would get a better rate from the landfill that they go to.
Okay.
I think it had something to do with the fact that they are, they do have the west's most western trash. Yeah. And they didn't want mixing with non-western trash, so. At least, that's my understanding of it. Go ahead, Patrick. Go back on script.
So currently, the city Mesa, currently, the city Mesa incurs landfill charges of approximately $6 million per year, and we receive about $1.1 million in revenue for recyclables. One of the things that was in the request for proposals, that it stated that each municipality will have the right to select their own respondent that they're gonna take their trash and their recycling to. So what we're just pointing out there is that, just because we did a joint, or a multi-request for proposals, we all don't have to pick the same respondent, and as we discuss this further, you'll see the different entities that responded, and the different sites that we can go to. We received eight responses. One was from Salt River Landfill, Republic Services, Waste Management, Right-Away Disposal, Silver Barn Land, Regional Landfill, RE Community, United Fiber, and Freedman Recycling Companies. And later in this presentation, there'll be some maps that show where those sites are. As part of our review, we did a technical review, and what we're looking at there is just to make sure that the respondents met all the requirements of the request for proposal, that basically, they can meet our qualifications, and their method of approach, and the sites are safe for our operators to go to. We did that review, and as part of the overall team of both Gilbert, Tempe, and Mesa, we found that all the respondents met the requirements of the RFP. And so then, basically, the next step is choosing who we're gonna go to, and that's based on the price and the distance to the site. To give you a perspective of what we do, we average about 28,652 loads per year for trash. And what this map shows in front of you, in red are the existing sites, and green are the new sites. And so one of the things that really came from this request for proposals was the addition of these sites that we think will help with our operational costs.
Yeah, Patrick. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Just a question. I was a little confused when I reviewed the presentation. So are the green sites proposed for the future, or they're contained in the proposals that you receive, or are they actually existing today, and we don't use them?
There's a couple sites that are existing, like the Seventh Street and the Lone Butte. The site that's on the southern end of the map there, it says Germain Transfer Station, that's actually will be built as a result of this request for proposals. What Republic has basically said to us is, if we give them minimum tonnage, that they'll open this site in August of 2014. Now, that date's probably gonna move to probably October, November, because all the cities need to get agreements with them, and once they have agreements, they'll go through their building permit process that they're gonna go through.
Yeah, a follow-up question. When you show the new sites on the different slides, will those sites still exist regardless of which respondent the three cities select?
Yes, Councilmember Kavanaugh. Yeah, one of the interesting things about our request for proposals, when we ask for bids, we ask the respondents, what would you do if we took you like 1,000 to 5,000 tons, or 5,000 to 10,000 tons? Would your bid go up or down based on the amount of tonnage that we send to you? Only Salt River Landfill had like a difference in price. Basically, they said if we brought them, if I recall correctly, a little over 6,000 tons a month, we'll get a lower rate from them. And so, we, just by ourselves, city Mesa, can meet that minimum tonnage to get that lower rate that would serve us better. The Germain Transfer Station that I mentioned earlier, they want about 90,000 tons delivered to them. Us, and Gilbert, and actually, Phoenix is interested in going there as well, can meet that tonnage requirement. But all the other sites did not have any kind of difference in their, their bids were based on, it didn't matter if we gave them one ton, or if we gave them all of our tonnage. Did that answer your question?
Partially.
Partially.
What did I?
Well, let me ask you this. The annual loads and the tons that's in the upper right-hand corner, that 28,000, is that Mesa only, or is that the consolidated group?
This is Mesa only.
That's Mesa only.
Okay. Now, as I understand this, the reason for going out and trying, and creating this group is to, is to increase the tonnage so we can get basically two things. First of all, a volume discount, because we now have reached a certain level of efficiencies that would make it more beneficial for somebody to take us on, and operational efficiencies, the ability to place transfer stations and other things in a way where all three cities can be more efficient in how we use that. So, I guess, that still holds, right? I mean, I'm a little confused when they say it doesn't matter whether you go one ton or 5,000 tons. That seems to go against what we just said. Mayor, is that one ton or 5,000 tons, based on an understanding that we'll have a consolidated total that'll reach a certain amount that is far in excess of 215,000 annual tons?
Yes, Mayor. When we did the request for proposals, we included all the tonnage for all three cities.
And you may say that, but just so we can get a little bit of context, how much approximately is the combined three-city tonnage?
215.
215, 215,000 is Mesa.
90, 90-some plus from Gilbert and Tempe. I don't have that right off the top of my head, but it was probably about 350, 400,000 tons, somewhere in that range.
They're almost twice what we are?
No, combined.
Oh, combined, okay. So, well, if we have 215, and Gilbert has 90, that's 305 right by itself.
Scott's got the number.
Thank you. Okay. This is Scott. He's Pasternak, he's with SAIC Consulting. And what he's handed me is a copy of the RFP. And in the RFP, we pointed out that all three cities' tonnage was approximately 444,000 tons per year.
Okay. So basically, if we were out on our own, we would be bidding a 215-plus, because I'm sure, I'm assuming we're gonna do increase our tonnage as we grow a little bit. We would be bidding a 215,000-ton contract, and we're saying now we're bidding a 440,000-plus ton contract, which is to grow, and we're assuming that someone, just like we did on the ambulance and other things, as a regional contract, it would be much more economical, or much more attractive to these providers to come in, and they'd give us a better deal.
That was the assumption, and we believe that that actually came out true. What I was trying to point out-
Well, that's good, because if it didn't, then maybe we wasted our time.
No. Well, there's a couple things, as we show you these maps. One, we think we got lower bids, based on that overall tonnage.
Okay.
What I was trying to point out earlier is that the respondents didn't limit us on that, those lower rates. They didn't say, you have to give us all of your tonnage to get the best rate from us. They're saying, based on the, all that tonnage that's available from the 444,000 tons from all three cities, this is what we're willing to offer.
So they bid that amount based on the estimate, and whether it's 420,000 or 500,000, they said, we've given you our best offer. And whereas Salt River said, scaled it, and said, if you hit 440, it's this rate, if you get up to, and I don't know what the number is, but let's just pick a number out of the air, if you get up to 600, the rate goes down. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. I got you now.
And Mayor, Councilists, also remember, there's two parts to this formula. It's not only the tonnage, or the cost per tipping fee at the landfills, but they also understand strategically that if they can position themselves for the convenience of reducing mileage, that makes a difference too.
Which is where the transfer stations come in.
Yes, and so by putting these locations, having them now available, right now, we have very limited options, because we're required to take 75%-
75% of our-
75% of our tonnage to one landfill.
Okay, so, and that's right, Salt River right now, so.
Right, so this allows us, this is now-
Well, so, that leads us to nothing. Tell us exactly what areas of the city we need, we need to come from to get that 75% right now. I mean, are we driving from, from the Super Red Tan Exchange north?
Yes, sir. We operate, we move trash and recycle material from all parts of the city to meet those obligations of our current contract.
Okay.
Once those contracts expire, some of the recycle contracts expire early in January of this coming year, the trash contracts expire at the start of 2016. Once those contracts expire and allow us to leverage these regional sites, we'll be able to look at lowering our operational costs by using the proximity of the locations to where we pick up the trash on the route.
So you'll be able, it'll be a shorter route to a transfer station or a landfill, and what we're thinking is that, instead of driving 15 miles, you may only have to drive four or five miles, and therefore, you would gain an efficiency, both an efficiency and actual operating cost reduction.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If I may, just to clarify a little bit for Councilman Kavanaugh, these sites are operational now, and will remain operational in the future. There's still trash that has to be disposed of, and they handle that process now, but the benefit of leveraging this three-city consortium was we were able to actually get a new one built, in the Germain Transfer Station, and that helps us in our westernmost region of Mesa, to help deliver some of our trash and green waste disposal to that site.
So you just go due south from the westernmost?
Right. And we'll see on the next slide, about the emergence of recycle centers, that we had no alternative today to deliver, except to the recycle center at the Salt River Landfill. As those come online towards our east Mesa Service Center, and our east Mesa locations, we'll be able to significantly reduce the amount of mileage that we incur in delivering recycles to those facilities.
Okay.
And then, Mayor and Council, what I, those are right on point, and this is such a dramatic change for us, operationally, is that now we're considering even how we are deployed. You know, today, we deploy pretty much from one central location also, which means that even if we, you know, at the end of the day, somebody has to come back all the way to one location. So, these savings are significant enough for us, that we're even considering how we may redeploy, or where we deploy from may also change, and have two different locations, just to take advantage of now these regional-
Or truck barns, basically, and-
Some other option than having it in one location, because now we get the advantage of closer to-
And now, they all accumulate-
At West Mesa Service.
Yeah, I was just close here.
At Mesa Drive.
At Mesa Drive.
Okay.
On the map in front of you, that's labeled in the blue triangle.
Oh, okay. So all our trucks come back to there at the end of the day?
That's correct. And the industry term is deadheading, and that's moving a vehicle to a location to pick up the route, before they actually have any trash to pick up. That deadhead cost now, if you just look at the map that's in front of you, from Mesa Drive and University, we may have to pick up at Sausman and Guadalupe. So we have to drive trucks all the way out there to start the routes, and then return them to the local stations that are as close proximity.
20 miles, almost?
Oh, yeah, right?
15, 20 miles, okay.
So we're actually studying what that overall cost savings is gonna be. We believe we have a ballpark number where we're at, but Ray Ferlich-
Let me ask you, how much, how much trash can one truck pick up before they gotta head to the fill? Can they do a whole day's route? Do they have to go midday? Does it depend? I'm sure it depends, but I mean, on a normal, if that, if that truck goes out to Sausman and Guadalupe, for example, are they out there the whole day, and then they hit the landfill? Or do they have to do a midday trip to a transfer station or landfill?
I'm sorry, Mayor. On average, they take a couple of trips a day to the landfill.
Okay, now, out there, they don't have, they probably wouldn't have to go all the way into Salt River. They'd go to a transfer station, or they might have to go to Salt River.
Right.
Currently. Which one is it?
No, you're correct. They may go to the transfer station that's located at Santan, where they use that for trash. However, the dramatic changes on the recycle-
Recycle. They only can go up to Salt River.
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha.
Can we give a little more detail on that answer?
Take some more detail on that. This is Ray Ferlich, who's our-
Let's go on, let's go to the, let's show the green, green ones.
Yeah, I'm just trying to set the stage, so we understand where we are now, and where we're headed.
Basically, trash routes on the residential side take two or three loads a day.
Okay.
Green waste and recycle take about two loads. On the front-load trash, they'll take three, four, or five loads.
Okay.
So it depends on the commodity.
All right.
So you're sealing my thunder a little bit about one of the advantages.
All right.
But on the, one of the-
If you'd have given me the script before, and highlighted the thunder parts, I would have avoided that.
Because what this map shows you is, is some things that we're pretty excited about with, this, this RFP process generated two new sites for us for grain. And if you, if you take away the green from, from the map, you'll see that when we're on the east side of town, we really have to go all the way to Salt River to dump the green, and then all the way back to get the second or third load, as Ray mentioned. So that, that time and fuel costs that we're gonna save based on these two sites is pretty substantial for us. And then, as was mentioned with the new recycle sites, we have three new recycle sites. One of them's right next to an existing transfer station on the southwest corner. You'll see United Fiber is a new site, right next to the RE Community. And so when we go there, that's based on the rates that we get from them for, for the recycle. What's really gonna benefit us is the transfer station at Waste Management, and Rad's transfer station. That's gonna help us on the east side of town, instead of having to drive all the way to the Murph, at the Salt River Landfill. And just to let you know, on the map, it does point out that we, we average about 6,500, 100 annual loads for recycle. And as was mentioned, one of the things we are looking at is trying to maximize the benefit that we're receiving from these bids, and looking at a second operational center, more than likely at the East Mesa Center. So our next steps, basically, we just wanna reiterate that the key benefits from the RFP were the competitive low tipping fees that we'll discuss later this morning with you, and then that we believe we can secure for at least 10 years, and we have several new competitive disposal and recycling sites that afford us closer proximity to daily collection routes, which provides us operational savings in both fuel and labor. And the next steps, we're, we'll figure out the exactly amount of tonnage that we wanna take to the respondents, to get the maximum financial benefit from that. We'll meet with those successful responders, and our goal is to execute contracts in late November, early December. And then periodically, we'll come before the council to talk about the efficiencies that are gained, both from the RFP, and if we just decided to go with a second operational center, how that, that is working out. Be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
So when you say contracts will be executed in late November, and meet with successful responders, when, when are you gonna come back to us to present what those actual?
Our, our plan of action is to come before council on November 18th.
Okay, so on November 18th, you'll come to us with your proposals for which contracts to approve and everything?
Right. And most likely, we'll, we're probably gonna take advantage of a majority of them, because it's to our advantage to have several options, right? So that we can operationally access many different locations, because there's very few that require us to have a minimum tonnage. So what we'll be able to do now is determine from a mileage standpoint and route standpoint, you know, where we're gonna go, and how we're gonna, you know, from the different parts of the city. And then that will, that's really kinda what we're gonna go. So we've got, we'll get the pricing from the landfills, we'll bring that to you, but I don't suspect, except for a few, we'll have the minimum tonnage that will be required. Not like today, where we're required at 75%. It'll be much lower than that. And that will just give us the flexibility-
Now, the reason they may, they may not require minimum tonnage is that, I'm assuming, they, they look at your operations and assume that there'll be a natural flow coming a certain way, is that what you're thinking?
With us and Tempe and Gilbert also.
And Gilbert, Gilbert together?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty.
And so, yeah, so that's what we'll be bringing, those, it'll have a variety of, I guess, vendors, or sites, that will be providing, or getting those approvals from the council. And then it allows us the flexibility, then, to go to different sites as we determine operational efficiencies. And then what we're, we're gonna do is, we're seriously considering, now, once we get that laid out and get those locked in, we're gonna have a significant conversation internally about, does it make sense for us, with these savings, to move part of the fleet to the east, so that that's where they begin and end the day? You know, there's some costs. We own the land, we've got a lot, we've got facilities out on the East Mesa Service Center, but we could save a significant amount now, if we're not having to drive all the way back to Mesa Drive and six-
Gotcha.
-in order to do that. So that's, that's something we're looking at. And then combining that with our conversion of our fleet to CNG, we see both of those being a real positive for solid waste going into the future.
Great. Any questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Look forward to the follow-up, or to the report back, once we decide.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item is here, presentation discuss and update on the 2012 Parks Bond Projects.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to come back, give you an update of where we're at with these projects, since they were approved last November by the voters. Before I go to that second bullet there, just wanted to remind the five areas that we focused on in the bond program, and those dollar amounts there. Parks Conversion and Improvement Projects, the Community Partnership Projects, the I-Mesa Park Renovation and Enhancement Projects, the I-Mesa New Park Development Projects, and the I-Mesa Bike and Pedestrian Path Projects.
Hey, before you go any further, I don't know if we've seen you since you got the accreditation. I know we saw you in regular council meeting on that award, but congratulations, and-
Thank you. Thank you again, yeah. Tremendous honor.
Thanks to Councilmember Richens, who I think went with you.
Yeah.
I'm trying to give you, I'm trying to give, go with the flow, okay, Dave?
Give credit where it's due, though. Those guys.
Thank you. It was a lot of work, but it was, we appreciate the support and recognition and encouragement to go for those types of recognitions, so, thank you. Again, those five areas totaled the $70 million. What's been great about this program and the way we've structured it, and we've talked about it all along, is leveraging those dollars to receive further grant dollars, as well as some general fund contributions towards infrastructure improvement. So, we continue to grow that program more and more with those, as we look for those opportunities, regardless of which department is leading the project, seeking those grant opportunities to add more value to these, to these projects. So right now, we're at about a total of $77.7 million over the four years. We are currently in the process of holding several public meetings and stakeholder meetings, depending on the project and the various stages they're at, and those will continue to be ongoing throughout, just as this project has been in citizen involvement all the way from the beginning, will continue all the way through the end, and that's been a fun process to be a part of. Four Mesa design firms have been selected to date with a large makeup of Mesa subconsultants on those design teams, and two Mesa general contractors to date have been selected. And again, those general contractors understand the emphasis on using Mesa firms for product acquisition, as well as their subcontractors, and we continue to make that a point of emphasis. Update on the projects themselves. First, the park conversion and improvement projects. McDallan Record, this is where we're looking at a urban mountain bike park, a bike park, which will, so, flow track for mountain bikes, as well as BMX and pump tracks for younger, younger age groups. We had our first public meeting in October with 80 people. Feedback was relatively positive. We've addressed some concerns for those neighbors that border the property, and have shifted some boundaries and- some boundaries and kept everything within a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five feet away from their property lines. Removed, moved some structures to some other areas to appease some of the, the views out there and allow them to still use their backyards accordingly without interrupting views of adding new structures and stuff. So a great turnout, good participation. We, the designer is Norris. The, this, we're running this one through the job order contracting process so we can keep it moving along, and that's Valley Rain. And we anticipate being able to start within the next month or so on that project and, and moving through, hopefully, next fall it'll be open.
Hey, Mark, I just, real quick, is that area in the upper, I guess that would be the northwest corner, is that the parking area that looks like a round, a roundabout? I, I can't-
Yeah, right in, in here?
Yeah.
Yep, uses an existence, existing entrance off the, the access road to the well site and just kind of circles it around, is around about, about twenty cars, I believe, twenty vehicles. Again, some of the features that are on that site, again, this is designed kind of be like a, a mountain, like a ski resort in, in terms of skill levels. So you have blue, black, and, and green, depending on the skill level, and, and the tracks will get narrower and narrower and harder obstacles, the more difficult they become. Can see some of the features that'll be there. Again, trying to implement a lot of, of natural elements in there to make it blend in with the desert environment, so you can see some of the ideas for signage and, and pavement treatments and site furnishings there. Next one is Medina and Haas. We had a public meeting on Tuesday, we had about fifty people in attendance at that event, and the designer's EPS. This will be a public bid for construction, and this is one of those areas where we leverage these, the bond dollars to receive further grant funding from the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. We anticipate being able to begin this project in July of 2014. McKellips and Ellsworth, this is the parcel located next to Zaharis Elementary School. This has been a fun project to, to work with and get the school involved and engage fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, working with the school to kind of do a civics lesson as well as a, a parks planning lesson, if you will, and, and teaching them what, the role they play in, in helping build their community and support their community by participating. So you can see a picture there of us doing a little design charrette with, with some of the teachers and students there. Public meeting was on, in October with eighty-three people. We have another one scheduled for December 3rd. Logan Simpson is the designer. If you'll recall, this is one of the sites where we received a lot of feedback and went through a lot of modifications. This is the current site plan, and again, I mentioned that partnership with the school district. One of the things you can see is we're utilizing the existing school drive to bring in traffic to this site and will help meet a need for the school as well by providing them additional parking, which is much needed too, so it can be used both ways. And a lot of the changes we've made here, I'm happy to report back at that public meeting, some of the, the vocal concerns that were, we had early on in this project, they were addressed and they were, were pleased with the direction that we're headed. And again, some of the different environmental education nodes that we're looking at and the different shade gathering areas to put in this site. Next one still to come in the future is the Signal Buonelli property, and that one's scheduled to begin in June of 2014. The Community Partnership Projects. Mesa Junior High, Demolition by MPS began a couple weeks ago with the exception of the gymnasium and associated buildings, the library, cafeteria, and auditorium. Those facilities will remain. They'll continue to do their fine grading and restore those utilities to those sites for us, and then in March of 2014, the city will maintain, take maintenance over at that site. We are working on stakeholder meetings, scheduling those now with the different sports groups and, and various interest groups to get some feedback and, and buy-in from those groups before we hold the public meeting in February of 2014. So design and construction schedules still to be determined, but EPS was the designer and Valley Rain was the construction manager at risk that went through the bid process. The West Mesa Sports Complex, or the sites specifically focus on Mesa Education Center and Powell Junior High. Trying to run these projects simultaneous between both Powell and Kleiman, which is the next slide that we'll get to, as well as Mesa Junior, and trying to get those same sports groups to buy in. We're talking about a two-and-a-half mile distance between the two sites, so without duplicating services too much, trying to get, again, buy-in from those groups to determine the exact layout, configuration, and dimensions of fields that'll be there in, in the different service groups. Again, public meeting in February, design and construction to be determined, scheduling the stakeholder meetings, as I mentioned, in the, in the coming weeks here. Designer for this site is J2, and the CMAR is DL Withers.
So, Mark, you said that, you understood that. What that means is that by taking all three of these sites and kind of jointly planning them, we kind of make it, we decide kind of where the different, where this youth sports might be, where there might be some adult centers. Is that what we're suggesting here, or is it different levels of youth, or?
Yeah, correct, Mr. Brady. The idea would be, do they become shared use fields that go between youth in, in early afternoon and then adults in the evening? Or do we make one complex adult sports primarily and another site primarily youth, youth sports? We have some different ideas on that and some different ways to configure those sites and, and have that discussion, but we want to have that discussion with those community youth groups first before we commit to anything and get, and give that direction and that feedback from those meetings to the designers so that they can continue to move forward and present different options and layouts.
Councilmember Luna?
Mark, will the students from the Mesa Education Center be able to take advantage of those sites during the day?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, yes. That's part of our, our IGA, our standing IGA with the school district, is anytime where there's an opportunity to share those, those joint properties, and we do so accordingly. And they'll be, and I am communicating with the school district. Dr. Hogan is the point of contact for me, and, and we communicate on, on the different plans and different direction and layout that we're talking about putting-
And an IGA is, is still an intergovernmental agreement?
Still intergovernmental agreement. I'll leave my quarter on the table.
Hasn't, acronym hasn't changed.
I'll leave my quarter on the table, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Again, as we were discussing, Kleiman Park, again, treating those as two sites there, same designer, same CMAR, same schedule.
Now, Kleiman, it looks like it's an upgraded to the existing softball. Is there a change there, or just they're going to be upgrading and rebuilding? Because those things are fairly old, right? And then converting that open space and that other part up to the northeast into three soccer fields?
Correct, Mayor. This is what was put in the, as the conceptual designs in the bond program. Again, we're not tied to any of these, and, and these may not make the most sense, but one of the things that we recognize is that the, for softball in particular, these fields are about seventy-five feet short. So if we can get these to three-hundred-feet outfield, then that'll help us and take care of that, and then we-
Glad you're doing that, because when I used to play softball there, it was boring hitting the, over the fence so often.
Yeah.
Given more of a challenge to get to three-hundred feet. Thank you for doing that.
Anything to help, uh, help you out.
Thank you.
And then we also recognize the, just the demographics there. There's tennis courts there that are in bad shape and, and beyond repair, but we recognize the changing demographics in that area and the need for increased multi-sport fields, whether it's soccer, or flag, or football, or rugby, any of those type of things that you can play on a soccer field.
I think the term we use now is what? Athletic fields, right?
Multi-purpose fields, yeah, either way. Pioneer Park held our first stakeholder meeting on October 22nd. We had representatives from the veterans groups, the Save the Train Committee, Horseshoe Club, the Rose Gardeners, Pioneer Families, and a few others. Obviously, a lot of interest and a lot of various needs within that park. We got some great feedback from them. We're taking that feedback now and working through some design concepts with the designer, Kim Lee Horn, and we'll come back and present those different options and, and how things, we think things can tie in at a public meeting in January, and then another one in mid-February after we get feedback from that site as well.
And that's exciting. I've heard from a few of the people who have participated in that. Of course, everyone has, someone has, people have very strong ideas. Just keep in mind, this is right at the, the light rail stop, right? And we would love for this to be a destination kind of thing. I mean, I would be, shoot high. And I know that the Vice Mayor is, and Councilmember Glover have talked a lot about this since, you know, this is going to be a place I'd love for people to jump on a light rail, whether they be Tempe, Phoenix, whatever, and say, hey, we want to go down there, and Pioneer Park's a destination. So I think that you have a unique opportunity because of its, its position, right, right literally at a stop on the light rail.
We would agree with that, Mayor, and are taking all those things into, to consideration. And that's absolutely why we try to bring all those groups together, to look at those different interests and those different needs that are out there, and then come back and present a formal master plan to, to both the citizens and council so that we can get some direction and make sure-
And one other thing, and I, I want to make sure, I don't know if you've talked to how much coordination there's been with, with Valley Metro on the planning of that park and ride. I still look at that stretch of La Suehr going north from-
Yeah, it's, we've had that discussion.
Okay, because that street-
Whether it's Metro or whether we actually just, it would get closed off and considered part of the park improvements.
Yeah, because that, that, that stretch of street serves no purpose other than to feed what's already there, and I think it would, I think, you know, you can have easy access to all the development to the north off of First Street, and it seems like there's a, there's a large bit of property. I was there for the powwow last weekend, and, you know, that's, the street's wonderful, but we're missing out on a lot of space-
Right.
...that we could use for either parking or for other things.
Right.
So I hope that we either coordinate, even if we extend, we still need to coordinate a little bit, or we should.
Well, what it may do is if we are able, if we do plan on closing that portion off, it eliminates a traffic stop, a traffic light at that intersection.
Yeah, and that could become the main entry into the park and ride with no traffic light.
Right. So there's, we, Metro's aware of it, Mark's looking at how to maybe incorporate as part of what we may do, so all those are being discussed right now.
Okay.
We just need to figure out, well, we need to have a conversation with some of the neighbors that are right up there north of that location, which, they have a way out, there's two ways out.
Yeah, we could do a cul-de-sac up there.
So that they're aware of what we're talking about.
Okay, gotcha, yeah.
And Mark Alstrom from Engineering Staff is involved in both projects, so we have that constant link going back and forth.
Yeah, I think, you know, in a perfect world, it would be nice if, if the transition, visual transition was almost seamless, that they were-
From the park and ride to the park.
Yeah, between the park and ride and the park, and, and that, you know, whether, even if there was some sort of separation, because we didn't want park and ride there, whatever, that it would be almost seamless from visually, and you could easily, it would, it would have the same look as opposed to being two very distinct things that look like they weren't, they weren't coordinated. Okay?
The Museum and Cultural Resource Expansion, consultant is working towards fifty percent design set. The exterior improvements are going through the State Historic Preservation Office approval. Complete design should be completed in February of 14, and Project Demolition is currently underway and should be wrapping up, well, it's the end of October today. The designer for that is Historical Streetscapes, and the construction manager at risk is Concord Construction, and just an image of kind of the, the future where they see that headed. Riverview Park, if you've taken a drive down Rio Salado or Dobson, you've noticed every day is a different, a different view over there. It's an exciting project. We're looking forward to behaving, being able to celebrate a grand opening with the community on January 25th of 2014. Again, the designer is Gree Pickett, and the construction manager at risk is Hunt Construction Group. Can see a couple images there of, of the lake and the walk and some aerials of that location. City is actually taking over control of the quad fields tomorrow, and will begin the overseeing process of that tomorrow afternoon or early next week. Some of the unique play equipment for this site, again, this, the idea was to create, make Riverview with the adjoining Cubs Spring Training Stadium and Complex, a destination park and a showcase park, and doing some creative and unique play amenities in there. So you can see the, the big green rope climber, Green Monster, has all sorts of names, we're calling it. We'll, we'll stick on one eventually, but a crazy rope climber that is, this is the only one that looks like this in America. The other one is, is in-
Is that good or bad?
Yeah.
Yes.
Pretty awesome.
Okay, good.
It is, is very unique, and, and we got the idea from a, a playground in Germany and worked with the manufacturer to replicate that here. But what's been neat about that process is the, they're so excited about it that they've made this, the different elements that we, as we built ours, they've created the different elements so other communities can model theirs after this, or take bits and pieces off, off of it to build similar structures.
It's hard being a, tough being a trendsetter, I'll tell you.
The Genesis Rope Tower, this is the one we always ask Debbie to look the other way, but this is the world's tallest rope climber at fifty feet, and it's quite the structure, and a neat element that adds some vertical height to the location. And then the last picture there shows the rock climbing wall, three-hundred linear feet of, of rock climbing wall, very natural looking. The touch, the feel, the look, everything looks like it's a real rock wall, and kind of gives that enclosed, you're in your own little space, play space there, and you can see some of the other play elements starting to be installed there, including the Big O's swing, and the far back, there is a teeter, new age teeter totter, if you will, and then the rock wall also features a play for it, then traditional play equipment in there as One of the things that we've noticed as this site continues to be constructed, as the entire hundred-and-forty acre site continues to be constructed, is the opportunities and the enthusiasm for possible future development on this location. So what we've noticed is that we're going to have to address long-term parking again at this location, and the best way to do that, as we know with our spring training operations, is through multi-sports fields, and multi-purpose fields, athletic fields, duplicating as both parking as well as an athletic use or a community event use afterwards. So we are going to utilize the existing softball fields. Right now, they're a construction staging zone. They were, they will not come back as softball fields, and we're currently working on design to create six potential multi-purpose fields that can again be used for soccer, rugby, football, lacrosse, quidditch, event space, and then also work as parking as, as well for spring training or other events that may occur in the park or the Paseo. So we're working on that design in-house and, and first, and then we'll bring some consultants on to help us. Construction period is, is to be determined, but we'd like to start that as soon as spring training ends, or is close to, so we can keep that moving along and, and be ready for use as, as soon as possible, and then we'll go through publicly.
So in the interim, we're going to have, we're going to prepare it to the point where it can be used for parking during spring training?
It'll be stabilized for parking for this-
Yeah, that's not the end product.
No.
We'll wait till they're done, and then we'll go in-
Yeah.
-next spring and summer.
We want to get past this season, and then as soon as the season's over, then we come in and do this.
Now, on these multi-purpose, eventually, those are planned to be lighted, right?
We will try to light as many as possible without impacting the number of parking spots that we can get on there, on that location within the contract of the, the agreement with the Cubs.
And how does lighting affect that much?
We, we just need to make sure that we place the poles, we're looking at, we will try to get as many of those fields lit as possible, as, without, you know, putting a pole right in the middle of taking up four parking spots, because we know parking's a premium with this, with that agreement, and trust, trying to address both needs accordingly. So you have a-
I think we're, we're going to talk later today with council about a plan to add additional parking capacity at this site, so-
Okay.
I think as we get that plan in place, we may be able to address the lighting without worrying about-
Okay.
I think we'll be fine. It's, again, fitting it in the budget too will be another issue. And then, Mark, along with this one is the field over-
Yeah.
The championship, what are we, I don't know, the field west of the-
It was going to be a baseball diamond, but it is no longer a baseball-
That would be included in these improvements too.
Do west of the clubhouse, well, actually, technically southwest of the clubhouse.
Yeah.
Correct.
So we'll look, that would be an additional field.
Which, when you look at it, is much bigger than it looks like on a aerial.
Yes, it does. Anyway, I'm just, we'll add that into this, so you'd have another field for-
Correct.
And there are no other plans for that area other than to remain, I mean, this, we're planning long-term, hopefully that this is a sports complex. That one, there are, we, we have no other plans and no other ideas. That one will be almost permanently a, a grass field, right?
Right.
Okay.
Mesa High Aquatic Center, we have a public meeting scheduled for December 10th. We've had some early meetings with community stakeholders on this location, and feedback was extremely positive and very supportive, so we have been working with the school district, and we are in agreement of location, and, and the number of parking spots that will remain, and everything else, so we are moving forward with the design. And at that community meeting, we'll be asking the community to provide us feedback on the different play elements that they'd like to see throughout the lazy river area, and the, in the zero-depth area, those type of things. So, again, the designer is Seamus Tabella, and then the construction manager at risk is Sun Eagle. And this amenity, I do want to point out, this adds to our aquatics inventory with the lazy river, this will be the one site that has that, that's one thing we're really missing from our aquatics inventory in this city.
And I know that that's important, lazy rivers are, of course. Councilmember Luna?
Mark, where exactly is it going to be placed? Give me a location.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Luna, this is located on the corner of Southern and Harris.
Which would be the southwest, far southwest corner of the campus.
Where the parking lot's at?
Yeah, in the parking lot, taking a corner of the parking lot, and putting the pool Existing park improvements, we're plugging away with some ballfield lighting, some playground improvements. We, again, we received a $20,000 grant for Kaboom for the Porter Park Playground project. Pecano Park, Emerald Playground, and Vista Monterey Playgrounds are scheduled for replacement as well. Ballfield lighting at Hawthorne Elementary, Fremont Junior High, and Evergreen Park. And then irrigation improvements at some of our larger sites, Sherwood Park and Candlelight Park are scheduled for this fiscal year, and then we'll be continuing to carry those on throughout the year. Some aquatic facility improvements, Carson and Fremont are both due for plaster replacement, and then the installation of ADA lifts at some of our locations. And then improvements in our recreation centers, the wood floors at both Red Mountain and Broadway will be redone. Still to come in this area, of course, is the Greenfield Park project, with the expansion of the urban lake there, and the fishing program, hopefully. And again, as I mentioned, ballfield lighting and playground replacements, as well as irrigation. The new park development projects, Monterey Park, this was, as we knew going in, would first be focused on land acquisition. The city has now acquired two parcels at this site for future expansion of the park, this location right along Monterey, and then the middle one, the third one, we are far, we've discussed with the property owner, but have not reached any agreements there, so we were, are looking at adding possibly a disc golf course to add some new amenities to this park. We've also added a, some tree plantings to help create some shading, and some border for the neighborhood along Monterey, and have also installed a parking lot to help get some of that traffic out of the neighborhoods and off of Monterey that utilize the park. And again, the full development of that site, and will require additional funding. Buckhorn Bass, land acquisition negotiations are currently underway, the city is doing its due diligence, though, through environmental testing. That unfortunately was slowed down due to the federal government shutdown, but is picking back up again, and the asbestos and lead sampling are underway. Again, designer and contractor to be determined, as well as the design and site, we believe the schedule, if we can get these schedules done and negotiations continued, hopefully by June, we can start design of this location. And again, another grant awarded for those environmental studies from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Mesa City Center, this is the downtown urban plaza, we've renamed it the Mesa City Center. The request for qualifications was released on August, 18 responses were received. We are scheduled to do shortlist interviews the week of November 18th, and then hopefully come back to council with the selection of the consultants at the end of December. The three top-ranked firms will be picked with a contract amount of $25,000 to complete an illustrative plan and 15% design concept by March, and then, of course, with the group at ASU that's been working on this, we've, staff continues to meet with them on a regular basis, and then the consultants will also have interaction with them to get their feedback and ideas as well. Bike and pedestrian path projects, the Riverview Rio Salado pathway is, the designers TY and J2, and the construction schedule's to be determined, but it is under design now. A million-dollar grant was awarded from the Arizona Department of Transportation to make that project go further along. And then the West Mesa Connector is, the designer's been J2, and the, it's currently under design. Still to come in this category is the Southeast Mesa Path. So that kind of gives you an update of where we're at, since the bonds were sold late last spring, and be happy to answer any additional questions.
No, we're just having a little side conversation here.
Don't, you don't, you don't even want to.
No, you don't. Go ahead, this looks good.
Thank you. And happy Halloween. I'll take that as my cue on the script exit statement.
No, 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 no. We're making a little comment about acronyms and all your.
You have a very popular contractor here.
All your contract, TY, J2, TBD Construction Company, all that kind of stuff.
They've been on the slide a little better.
Well, wait, you don't have, don't leave yet. Thank you. We just wanted to say thank you. Any questions, any other questions or comments from Mr. Hursberg? This looks really exciting. There's, there's some good stuff here, and, you know, as these things build out, I know that the Mesa citizens are going to really be proud of the improvements that they supported, and in many cases, through I.Mesa, they, they came up with the ideas. So, really excited to see these things take place, and I guess about a year from now, we'll really see, other than Riverview, which we're seeing right now, but we'll certainly see some physical evidence of, as projects are completed.
Yes, absolutely. We look forward to some ribbon cuttings and celebrations of continued successes.
This is good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Information pertaining to the current job order contract, are there any questions? You should have all received the schedule.
Questions?
Question?
No questions.
Okay, no questions. Great, thank you. Acknowledged, received amendments of boards and committees. Have a motion from Councilmember Glover, a second from the Vice Mayor, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Here reports on meetings and conferences attended. Have any reports? Okay, Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, this Saturday, November 2nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., is the West Mesa Barbecue Festival at the Banner Health Corporate Center. All proceeds benefit the neighborhoods of West Mesa, so invite everybody out to that. Next study session and council meeting will be Monday, November 4th. Also, we'll be having general plan update workshops next week, I think, November 7th. That one will be at.
I believe that one's at Ishikawa.
Ishikawa Elementary, and doors open at 6:30 p.m., and open house with presentations at 7:00. Is that correct? Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion entered in executive session. Councilmember Luna, second from Councilmember Glover, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are moving into executive session. Thank you very much.